Call meeting to order, please. Supervisor McCarthy, would you leave some invocation, please, sir?
If you'd please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we gather this evening once again in your sight to carry out the people's business. We thank you for the abundant blessings you continue to shower upon Frederick County. We ask you to give us the wisdom and the prudence to do what is in the best interest of our community, and your guidance that we might be good stewards. We ask that you protect our first responders who put themselves in harm's way each and every day for our sake. We ask that you watch over all those residents of Frederick County who are without electricity this evening, or who have no place to call home, that they remain safe and warm tonight. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Chairman Lofton, you'll leave some pledge, please, sir.
Would you stand face and fly for our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doctored the agenda. Are there any proposed changes?
Staff doesn't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? The motion is adopted, the agenda is presented.
Sir, moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Adopt the agenda as presented. Consent agenda. Any proposed changes?
Mr. Chairman.
Citizen comments.
Citizen comments is next.
Sorry. Citizen comments on any issue that will not be subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kevin Donegan.
Mr. Donegan, sir. Yes, we could have your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
My name is Kevin Donegan. I'm not a resident of Frederick County, but I'm here to represent American Woodmark in the transportation issue on Renaissance Boulevard. And I'm just here to show our support for the project. We feel that there's some safety concerns with the current Springdale Road route, and we're just excited to get the project going, and just wanted to let the board know of our support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
To approve the consent agenda submitted, sir, second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is adopted, is submitted. Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? None, we'll move on. County officials, committee appointments, extension leadership council, Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I hope to have a nominee for that at the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the next meeting, I will be making an announcement for reappointment or appointment.
Thank you. Board of Equalization, no one's come forward, so, folks, we're looking for someone willing to serve on the Board of Equalization. Anyone who might be interested? Transportation Committee?
Mr. Chairman, Transportation Committee met, and the item requiring board action is the Renaissance Drive Phase Two. As you will see in your packet, the information that was provided, the 30% design and update for the cost estimate for the completion of the project has been received. It was significantly higher than the original operating cost estimate. This was due to the fact of the increase in the cost of construction and materials. In response to that increased cost, staff requested estimates for additional project alternative options to include a two-lane bridge. We originally were looking at a four-lane bridge, and also at an at-grade crossing for the relocation of the Springdale Road. The core cost estimates, as you can see in your packet, the four-lane bridge with the two-lane road section will come in considerably higher than our initial estimate. Even the two-lane bridge with the two-lane road section come in considerably higher than our estimate. Given the available funding of what we have to work with, you will see that the funding that we have available will only fund two-lane roadway on each end and an at-grade crossing. After discussion of all the options and the information that we had, the committee voted to recommend to the board that we move forward with the roadway with the two-lane road section and the at-grade crossing. And Mr. Bishop, I'm sure will be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any questions of Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Discussion. Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
No.
Supervisor Slaughter?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Thanks. Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. I do think that it's short-sighted, but it's better than nothing.
Mr. Chairman, that ends my report.
I'm sorry?
That's the end of my report for the Transportation Committee.
Your report, thank you, sir. All right. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, request of Mountain Falls Park residents for designation of sanitary district.
Mr. Chairman, a quick history on this item. Back in April of 2018, we received a petition from residents of Mountain Falls Park to create a sanitary district. The code requires the board consider such a petition if it's received from 50 registered voters within the area where the district's requested. So we forwarded the petition to the voter registrar to validate the signatures and determine that it met that criteria. We brought the matter before the board. The code also requires that the board consider the practicality, feasibility, physical responsibility, and determine that 50% of residents of the district are in favor of the creation of a district. So the matter was scheduled for a public hearing. That hearing was held in June. There was really no determination at that time. Six speakers came forward. The board sent consideration of the creation of the district to our Public Works Committee and asked them to evaluate it, evaluate the anticipated costs, and come back with some recommendations. The Public Works Committee created a subcommittee that met on a number of occasions. They developed those criteria. That came back before the board in November. You adopted those procedures and scheduled subsequent public hearing for this evening. The materials developed by the subcommittee, among other things, gave a cost estimate of about $1.5 million to upgrade the roads to a condition similar to that of Shawnee Land and a $500,000 annual operating cost to maintain the roads. So the question really before you tonight is the question that came to you initially, and that is, do you wish to create the sanitary district? And again, this is a public hearing. We'll point out that since the inception of this discussion, our office has received communications via email, phone call, what have you, from 95 different individuals and 80 addresses. There are over 2,000 lots in Mountain Falls Park. There are 504 developed lots. So just to give you a sense of what we've heard relative to the numbers of residents within the area requested for the sanitary district. So I'm happy to answer any questions if I can, and again, it is a public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Tierney, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Supervisor.
Mr. Administrator, I thought there were like 1,200 owners in there. Is that right, or is it approximately?
There are owners that own multiple lots, so I don't have the numbers here readily in front of me, but it's something less than 2,000 certainly.
But the 50% is of those that own property there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
1,575 undeveloped lots, but some of them are held multiple. Other questions of Mr. Tierney, anyone? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak concerning this request? Come to the podium, your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Beth Shalap, and I'm a resident of Mountain Falls Park subdivision in the Back Creek District. As you're aware, I disagreed with this board's interpretation of the 50% requirement as it pertains to the sanitary district law. Nowhere in Section 21-114 does it state that the petitioners are required to obtain 50% of the property owner's signatures to determine if it's supported by 50% of the property owners who own real property within a proposed district. However, I do agree with this board's determination that the law is vague and gives little guidance. For that reason, after the December Frederick County Board of Supervisors meeting, I contacted delegate Chris Collins to ask for his help in requesting that the Attorney General provide a legal opinion as to the intent of this section of the law referring to the 50% requirement. After speaking with myself, Supervisor Dunn, and Attorney Williams, delegate Collins agreed to write a letter to the Attorney General asking for clarification. At that time, he told me it can take up to six months for a response. Therefore, I'm asking that this board keep the public hearing open and postpone tonight's vote on the sanitary district petition until a response is received back from the Attorney General. I feel that voting on this matter tonight without having received clarification from the Attorney General would be unfair to all the residents of Mountain Falls Park who signed the petition making the request to have Mountain Falls Park become a sanitary district. One other thing I just wanted to say because I think he misspoke, Mr. Tierney, excuse me, when he said it had to be supported by 50% of the residents, the law specifically states 50% of people owning real property within, and then it continues on. So there's a big difference there because originally when the Winchester Star did their article, it also said that, and that caused a little bit of misunderstanding because 50% of the residents would be 250 people. That's a big difference from 250 people to 750 people because the definition of real property is not just the homeowners, but it's also the landowners. So that's it. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone? Last call. We'll close the public hearing. It's Back Creek.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee and this board looked at policies and procedures for creating sanitary districts, and in those, it places certain burdens on those who wish to have the sanitary district established. I would ask that this board request of the petitioners to look at the procedures and the policies that we have approved and get the information that we request so that we will have a clear picture of what the state has enumerated as the criteria for this, not as necessary, practical, fiscally responsible, and supportive of at least 50% of persons who own real property within a proposed district. And I believe our policy states that it is upon, it is a duty of the petitioners to come up with those facts, especially the supportive of at least 50% of persons who own real property. So I would ask that this board, again, look to those persons who are petitioning for us to create the sanitary district to provide us with that information. And I would move.
You go out to further define it than that. End of public hearing.
I submit that if a sanitary district is to be established, whether it's Mountain Falls Park or any other subdivision, that our policies and procedures, like I say, call out for certain criteria to be met, and so I would ask that anyone, and especially now talking about Mountain Falls Park, is a Mountain Falls Park residence, come to us with a petition that says it is supportive of at least 50% of persons who own real property within a proposed district.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order. I don't think a motion's necessary at this time. I think the statute directs us to make a finding of fact upon the closing of the hearing. So to make a motion that this particular petitioner or other petitioners come back with other information at a future time, it's a fine motion. I agree with the sentiment, but it seems somewhat out of order in that the statute directs us to make a finding of fact at this point.
All right, well, we only have a second, so I don't think we can go further in discussion. Your point's taken. Is there a second?
Second.
Now we have a discussion. Would you like to further comment, Mr. McCarthy?
The, and the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but the statute directs that upon the closing of the public hearing that we as a board shall make a determination. And I think that's what is on the table at this point, is we need to make a determination whether the facts have been provided to us at this time satisfy, one, whether or not the sanitary district is necessary, two, whether or not the sanitary district is practical, three, whether the sanitary district is fiscally responsible, and four, whether it's supported by 50% of the persons who own real property within the proposed district. If we're unable to make that finding of fact on all four of those, then it would seem to me that the statute indicates that we cannot approve the sanitary district, and it becomes a closed item at that point, at which point it's then up to the petitioners to come back at a later date if they can meet those criteria.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I agree in concept with Supervisor McCarthy's comments. Again, I think the law, as it is written, is fairly ambiguous, and I know it says that we're supposed to make that determination. So I'm assuming that what Supervisor McCarthy is saying is, since we do not have that information, that this should not be, this item should not be considered, and we should find that we will not create the sanitary district. In line with that, I think I would agree, and so I would withdraw my motion to have the petitioners come back with the necessary information.
I will withdraw my second, and I'd just like to make a quick comment, and that is, just using common sense, it's kind of hard to do sometimes, but common sense would tell me that you, the people there in Mountain Falls, would like some time to be able to do some more research, and it sounds to me like the two gentlemen up here on the board have decided that that is what you need to do, you need to come back with more preparation and the list of signatures, so forth and so on. So it sounds to me like we're there, and you're getting what you want, and the board is doing the right thing.
So I might have to comment beyond that. I do think this public hearing's been open for eight months. It's time that it be closed. If we're not ready to make a decision about this issue, but we should.
Yeah.
We should make a decision, and there is absolutely no limit in the code to how many times and how frequently folks can come back and ask the same question. If they can support it, great, and if not, we're liable to end up where we are tonight. But this has been going on too long with very little activity anywhere, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I echo those remarks and the state law, even though we say it may be fairly clear here, I think that places quite a responsibility on the people in that particular subdivision, but that's how the state wanted it, and so that's how we should abide by that. So I would offer a motion then, unless there's more discussion, to...
Before you made the motion, I just wanted to ask a clarification question, and that would be that if this board votes to close this public hearing, et cetera, the petitioner can come back at a future point in time and restart the process again. Is that correct?
Actually, at any time. There are no restrictions whatsoever on how often or when.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
State code.
Thank you.
Do we need to close the public hearing first?
Make a motion. You could make it all part of the same motion, if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would...
Any way you'd like.
She wants to make a comment. Do you want to let her speak or not?
She can make it. Mr. Chairman, given the information that we have reviewed, and the information seems to be insufficient, I move that we deny the request of Mountain Falls Park petition to create a sanitary district.
Second.
Motion in a second to deny the request.
And close the public hearing.
Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right, that will bring us to rezoning 0418. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to rezone 20 acres from the B2 Business General District and .62 acres from the RP Residential Performance District, both with proffers, to the B2 and RP District with a minor proffer revision. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, the subject property is outlined in blue. It's located at the intersection of Tasker Road and Warrior Drive. Now, the subject property was rezoned with proffers back in 1998. The approved rezoning required that businesses be closed from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The applicant is seeking to modify the closure proffer to state that businesses must be closed to the public during those hours. The intent is to allow employees to remain in the business during closure hours, just not patrons. The applicant has also provided a new proffer that prohibits deliveries from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Now, the Planning Commission discussed this rezoning at their meeting on January 16th, and the Planning Commission did recommend denial. However, I would note that the proffers that the Planning Commission reviewed would allow certain businesses to operate 24 hours. And the applicant, since the Planning Commission meeting, has revised the proffers to try and address the concerns of the Planning Commission by going back to the closure from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, but with the addition of those three words, "to the public," to allow the employees in the structures. So with that, we are seeking a decision from the board. I'd be glad if there's any questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
Maybe a little clarification. When we say deliveries, I'm looking at that, and I'm saying that if I can have employees there, I can have employees bringing and taking away items from that particular business so there might still be truck traffic. Would I be wrong in that assumption?
The purpose really behind that delivery is since you have employees in the building overnight, you don't want to have them unloading trucks so that proffer is intended to not have any deliveries into the building during those hours.
I was thinking of deliveries from outside vendors coming in, bringing something in that the business might use, as opposed to employees themselves taking in and out items. So I...
It's really just prohibition of goods being delivered from the outside.
We're talking about the no deliveries of any kind.
Correct.
Between those hours.
Yes.
But the employees could still be in there.
Say stocking shelves or preparing things overnight.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Perkins?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Ms. Perkins, in other areas of the county where we've had this type of 24-hour access to commercial properties, there have been concerns raised about trucks being parked overnight that may not be delivering something. Has the applicant made any type of accommodation that would prevent trucks from idling all night long outside of an establishment?
No, that's not covered under this proffer, nor is it covered under the approved proffer.
Thank you.
Supervisor Dunn?
So just to confirm what Mr. McCarthy said, so there's no difference in truck traffic between the current proffer in place from 1998 and this proffer now, and the only difference is the ability for...
For actual unloading.
... to enter a building to do shelving or whatever.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins? Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt, is it you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Evan Wyatt of Creamway Engineering, representing the conditional zoning amendment. Just to clarify the difference between the Planning Commission public hearing and tonight's public hearing, the whole basis of bringing the proposed amendment forward is because you have 20 acres worth of commercial property that has been underperforming for a period of 20 years, and we've had some folks look at properties, put it under study. The hours of operation limitations always seem to be one of the primary concerns with buying and developing the property. So when we came to the Planning Commission with the original request, it was for the permitted uses in the B2 was to allow the majority of them to be open 24/7, but we still restricted the hours of operation for uses that we thought might be noisy and a potential nuisance to the adjoining properties, such as restaurants, bars, such as amusements, things of that nature. But for things that were not noisy, offices, grocery stores, things that if you're walking in from your car, whether it's during the day or in the night, you don't hear noise coming out of the building, that's what we were targeting. During the Planning Commission process, the question of delivery came up, and we told them we would certainly consider that and take a look at that. And so when we did, we came back with a proffer that still requested the businesses to be allowed to be open, but we also added a new proffer which restricted the delivery truck access between 11:00 and 6:00. So just to clarify a question Mr. Dunn just asked, the 1998 proffer, which is the current proffer we're under, does not have any restrictions whatsoever for delivery truck access. So this proffer that we've added is a new proffer to that. So when we went through the Planning Commission process, there was a concern about still giving the businesses the ability to be open 24/7. We also noticed, in talking with staff, that because the way the original proffer was written where it says businesses will be closed, there was a concern about future interpretation of that proffer, that that could mean that employees and owners could not be in the building between that period of time also. That in and of itself is a very significant issue that we believe needs to be clarified. Restricting the businesses to the public is certainly one thing, but prohibiting business owners to be able to be in their buildings, to have employees doing floor setups in the night, cleaning the kitchen, restocking, et cetera, et cetera, those are all things that are just going to place an additional burden on the potential for this property to develop if that's not clarified. So what we ended up doing was we went back to the original proffer, which still prohibits the same uses, which still allows the same uses, and restricts those uses still from 11:00 to 6:00, but with clarification that they're only closed to the public. We, in respect to the adjoining property owners that I had met with that requested consideration of the delivery restriction, we've added that to the proffer, and then we also added a monetary proffer for structural development. So the information before you tonight is... So the information before you tonight is very simply that. We still believe that the hours of restriction is going to continue to burden the project, and we will revisit that in the future if necessary, but this is where we are tonight, seeking clarification to make sure that business owners, if they do end up there, do have the ability to be in their facilities after 11:00. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and then following public comment, I'll be happy to readdress the board.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Mr. Wyatt, anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
For clarification again, the only difference between the proposed proffers now and the proffers that were approved in 1998 is the fact that the, whatever building may be there, is closed to any kind of public interaction, and people can be inside the building. Is that, am I making it too simple, or is that-
That really is that simple, but the proffer also does include new proffer language for delivery restriction and for monetary proffers.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Wyatt, one other item. The old proffer, no, the current proffer from 1998, if, for example, there were a grocery store there, would allow a truck to come in, stay there all night, et cetera. The new proposed proffer does the same thing. So whether it's old or new, if, for example, there's a grocery store that has deliveries during the night, there's going to be no difference. Is that correct?
No, the current, the proposed proffer would restrict delivery access between 11:00 and 6:00.
The current proffer would allow a truck on the property, correct?
The current proffer has no restriction for truck delivery through any time of the day.
Meaning the truck could come on, on the property, right?
Correct.
Okay. And this new proffer would also allow, though, the same thing. The truck can come on, park. I'm just asking, I'm asking as an informant a question. The truck can come on, park, stay there, so there's no difference on-
I'm not really following the current proffer allow, does have no restrictions for delivery, the proposed proffer does.
But a truck could come there, park for the evening, et cetera. Same as the old. Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Wyatt? Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. It says a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this proposed rezoning? If we could have your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Albert Washington with Chabuk Washington, representing Autumn Glen Homeowners Association. We are here to express our disagreement with the proposal and to note that it is not exactly the same as the way that was in 98. In 98, the property was brought before you, and an understanding was hashed out, and I think it's with some great debate as to what the limit should be, and it was agreed that 11:00 to 6:00 should be quiet time. There should be no operations during that period. The operations had to be closed from that period of time. What is being suggested now is that there are operations that are open 24/7, and that is to say that they are operational 24/7, so that everybody doesn't have to go home, the owners can be in there, the employees can be in there, and while they're stipulating that they wouldn't have deliveries during that period of time, that is something that would not happen if there was no one there, certainly. If someone is there and they say no deliveries, the likelihood that the trucks will come and hang out there before or after, so that they can anticipate getting in as quickly as they can when people show up or when it's allowed, is greater. But more importantly, I think that you are, or one might be ignoring, not that you are, but one might be ignoring the fact that if the operations are closed from 11:00 to 6:00, the 250 residents of the neighboring property bought into a community expecting that they would have a commercial operation next door someday, but that operation would not operate from 11:00 to 6:00. They believe the county's assertion and the promise that it got from the developer that that would be the case. There's nothing that's really changed with regard to the property or the nature, except for the fact that now the residents are there. They bought there in reliance on the county's promise that the property wouldn't have operations from 11:00 to 6:00. If they don't allow retail during that time, that's better, we would agree. However, during that period, if people that work there can come and go, they're not going to come and go silently, they're going to come and go in their vehicles. Those vehicles will make noise. There will be traffic, there will be doors slamming, that would not be there at all currently. So the peaceful enjoyment of the neighbors will be adversely affected, even if there's not operations from a retail standpoint. There will be less, but there will still be impact that is greater than that which they expected to get when they bought their homes. And as you can see, people bought their homes here as their forever homes. They put their final life savings into these homes, expecting that they would have a certain level of quiet there. And allowing this change is going to enhance the likelihood that they will lose that peaceful enjoyment of the property, and we ask that you honor your commitment to the community on which they relied when they bought that property and maintain the status quo with regard to operations. To do otherwise essentially is to say that we will change the deal that we make, and we will change the promise we make to you, so that the developer might, I won't guarantee, but might be able to make more money on the property. They've got the same fundamental use, they've still got the ability to develop the property, but what they're asking for is half the door open, which we think should be avoided, and we hope that you will honor your commitment to the community and give them the peaceful enjoyment they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Anyone? Yes, sir. Have your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir.
Allen Morrison, Back Creek District. Having managed a major distribution center that fielded numerous complaints from the adjacent residences, we're coming into defining what is a delivery. If the truck is backed up to the building and dropped at 6 o'clock, that's the delivery. But it can be unloaded and loaded all night long. Driving a fork truck in and out of a trailer makes considerable noise. Now, I had several complaints at night from two adjacent property owners for doing just that. The truck was staged, but inside employees can be generating quite a bit of noise, depending on what it is they do. The only way that this would be somehow acceptable is if the proffer would state no activity outside of the four walls of the building, so they could be inside stocking shelves, certainly enough not being noisy. But if there are allowed access to trailers, they're going to be making noise, and I think that's going to be unacceptable to the adjacent property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak concerning this application? Anyone at all? Last call. Then we'll close the public hearing. Ms. Peckham?
Mr. Chairman, I have spent numerous hours over the last two weeks. I've not spoken to you, Mr. Washington. I was told not to. I don't exactly know why, but I followed that direction. And I'm surprised at your comments this evening, because the people that I called and spoke with, some of whom are here tonight, I addressed the issue of having the, allowing employees and owners in the building, and I didn't get the same response you're giving to me. I'm just saying, they're here tonight, and they're welcome to come up and speak. I feel that I spoke with Mr. Wyatt and also Mrs. Shoemaker, who is the property owner, and trying to reach a reasonable solution to where we are. It is a commercial piece of property, and it has been in Frederick County for a long time, an empty lot. And unless we have some movement, allowances to do a few things, it's going to probably be an empty lot, and I don't think that's fair to the property owners of that piece of property, as much as it wouldn't be fair to the property owners on the other side to keep it open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's not right either. To answer the question about truck deliveries, there is no parking lot in Frederick County. There's no stop sign in Frederick County, that people don't run through the stop signs and people don't pull up on parking lots. They do. The only way you can stop that is to call the police department and say they're in violation of what they're doing, and let someone else handle that. So my answer to a truck idling on the parking lot would be, if that transpires, if there is a business there and that truck pulls to that lot and is idling, then it would behoove the residents there to make a telephone call to the police department and say, "Come and get this truck off the lot." That's true of just about, and I have commercial businesses behind me, so I understand where you are. As far as employees, it was my interpretation with Mr. Wyatt, and it just seems like it got blown out of proportion. And what I said was, this would be owner, employee, working in the building, not bringing in deliveries in their personal van, not unloading tractor-trailer trucks. That just, you know, to me was not part of this. It was just intent that if I owned the Hallmark card shop and I wanted to come in there after 11:00 o'clock and read new cards or whatever, under the old proffer, I wouldn't have the right to do that. As a business owner, I would like to have the right to do that. If I have a pizza shop, I'd like to come in and maybe have my employee in there and folding boxes or cleaning something. Maybe, maybe I'm not thinking outside the box, but I'm just trying to take people at their word, and after talking with these folks, that's where I walked away from. And I feel genuine that they are being honest in their consideration of the restricting things from 6:00 to 11:00. Based on what I talked with the folks here, and I came prepared tonight, and I'm going to continue with that, I would move that we accept this new proffer language and that we grant the zoning requirements as presented.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion. Ms. Rooney? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, hearing both sides, and I've, like all of us, I think we've heard from the people who live in Autumn Glen, and I can, I still don't have it solidified in my mind exactly what disruption there may be with the building being open to owners and employees during the evening. And I'm sure I'm missing something, but I can't get, quite get past that, so I don't believe I could support this at this time without some more information.
Further discussion, is there any? Supervisor Dunn?
The Planning Commission had had a major, had a discussion back in December, then there was another one in January. I attended the December meeting and heard a lot of the comments, and the reason I made the comments to Ms. Perkins were that there's no difference, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Wells, there was no difference on trucks or noise between the current proffer, which is in place right now, and this new proposed proffer. There's no difference, and my vote's going to be one way. If there is a difference, then I'd like to hear that, but-
I think the difference is that there's no deliveries between the hours. That wasn't in there. That language was not in the original proffer. The only, they have added no deliveries between those hours. And, you know, the other addition was that they were, in, I'm going to give you this, I'd like to have the ability to let the owner and employee work inside the building.
And I'm okay with that. I mean, that's, you know, working in the car, that's not an issue. My only, which I think is being neutralized, is if you have a tractor-trailer that's delivering food stuff, like for a grocery store, that's a, that's bringing frozen stuff in, under the current law, I think that can occur. Under the new law, I think that it can occur, so therefore that, because the non-
When you say law, are you talking about proffers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't want to get laws and proffers confused, because there's not a law situation here.
My misuse of the word, but basically under the current, if a grocery store came in there today, they could have a tractor-trailer there and they could do whatever it wants to do, and if you have this new proffer, if this, if this new item is approved, it's the same situation, so there's no change.
What don't you understand about the change is that there cannot be deliveries-
Okay.
-between 11:00 and 6:00.
All right.
The old proffer said you could do it anytime.
All right.
This proffer says that's restricted.
That's fine.
And I understand the concerns about all the other things. Those are things you, you take care of as they occur and have them stop, but no deliveries in this proffer I'm recommending between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00. No deliveries. End of discussion.
Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy?
I would, I would just make the point that there was a couple statements made tonight by Mr. Washington, that there was a commitment or a promise. I would just like to remind the public that proffers are never a covenant that runs with the land, that is a promise to any individual who's buying property next to it. It's not a promise from the county. The county's job is to try and balance the interests of all of its citizens who are living, trying to coexist next to each other and find the best possible scenario to, for the common good. Bob, to your credit, I think, you know, what you've explained kind of reiterates that, that this is a good compromise to get a piece of property to its highest and most viable use for the benefit of the community, while at the same time trying to balance the effects of that on the neighbors. So I look at this and I say, first, you know, I tend to defer to the supervisor whose district this is in and say, you know, you've put a lot of time into this, and I appreciate that. Second, I look at this and I say, this is a good compromise, so I think I can support this based on the fact that we're trying to find a good balance. We'll never be perfect. And to Supervisor Dunn's comment about there being no real change, it seems to me that what we tend to do whenever we have these zoning discussions is we look back in the rearview mirror in hindsight and say, well, wouldn't it have been nice if we had just had this extra little piece of restriction in there that would have made our lives better? Well, maybe we can get it in this time. So it's almost like we're trying to do a little bit better for one party or another versus just saying, okay, to Supervisor Dunn's comment, this is really no different tomorrow if we approve this versus it is today. The truck can still park in the parking lot today, it can park in the parking lot tomorrow. We've heard comments about activity outside. I certainly understand that, and I think that's a valid comment, but when we're balancing these two competing interests, I think it's a fair compromise, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, anyone?
If I could. It is my, it is my district, and these folks out here are the people that I represent. And I just want to reiterate that I spoke with a number of people and got a number of letters. If you gave me your phone number, I called you. And I came tonight under the idea that we had, I felt good about coming in here and saying, this is where we were, and this was pretty good. That was the comments I got. If some of you are here, those are the comments I got. I didn't get what I'm hearing from Mr. Washington. I didn't get any of the concerns about the other things. So I'm a, I'm a little here, but I do think that we still have, it is a piece of commercial property, it is going to be built on, and I think we're reaching a solution that will be probably one of the best that we could get. It is what it is, and I'm trying to work as hard as I can to make sure that you are not having noises in the middle of the night, and you're not having anything but the proper lighting and the proper sanitary shores and all those types of things that come with it. So I just have worked very hard to do that, and I still feel like this is an opportunity for Frederick County and also an opportunity to keep the people in Autumn Glen from having been infringed upon by the commercial businesses.
Further discussion, anyone? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, and the rezoning request is approved. That will bring us to discussion of the 19 to 24 Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Perkins?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to state, this is a discussion for the 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Now, the CIP is a document that consists of a schedule of major capital expenditures for the county for the ensuing five-year period, as well as a category for long-term projects, which are six-plus years out. Now, I would note that the inclusion of a project on the CIP is in no way an indication that Frederick County will- that Frederick County will be undertaking that project. It's a strictly advisory document. It's, is intended for use as a capital facilities planning document, not for funding, not for requesting funding allocations. Once adopted, project priorities and cost estimates may change throughout the year based on changing circumstances. It's also possible that a particular project may not be funding, funded during the year that is indicated on the CIP. Now, this year's CIP continues to reinforce the connection between the CIP, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and future rezoning applications. Now, within this CIP, we have a total of 79 projects. Those are for schools, parks and recreation, library, county administration, fire and rescue, transportation, and the airport. Now, shown in your CIP, those are broken up into three tables based on their funding sources. Table one is your general government expenditures, things like schools, parks, library. Table two is transportation. Table three is the airport. And then these are just, just the tables, table one, table two, and table three, shown in, in your agenda. And there's also a series of maps that correspond to the location of the property, of the location of the projects. And again, county administration projects, school projects, parks and recreation, and transportation. Now, the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee endorsed the CIP at their December 2018 meeting. They determined that the CIP is in conformance with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission then endorsed this at their meeting in January. So tonight, we are seeking authorization from the Board of Supervisors to forward the CIP forward to public hearing. And staff would note that if it moves forward to public hearing, the, there will be an amendment to the document to show the sheriff's department's expenditures that they've requested because we did receive those after this was put together. So I would note that you will see that in the future document. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Clarification, you didn't have the sheriff's request when this document was put together? Is that what I understood?
Correct. So it was correction we had to, before with series of meetings, but they did get that to us.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Perkins? Anyone? Well, the question is, are we ready to send it forward to public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move this forward to public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Forward in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those no, we're ready to forward to public hearing. Thank you. All right, that brings us to board liaison reports. Are there any?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Wells?
I'd just like to report that during this recent ice storm that we had on February the 12th, the 911 center answered 765 phone calls. Of that number, 504 were calls for service, and of that number, 229 were fire and rescue calls. In addition to the 765 calls received, they also placed 338 phone calls. And the, I think the dispatch staff and, and their work and the professionals who were out on helping our folks in Frederick County need to be commended for their efforts during this ice storm that we had, significant ice storm that we had. So I'd just like to commend them for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Any others? Board liaison reports? All right, citizen comments on any issue? Anyone have anything they'd like to share with the board? Anyone? Last call. Public comment period is closed. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir, Supervisor McCarthy?
To follow up on Supervisor Wells' comment about the fire and rescue calls, I had a discussion with Chief Jackson, the volunteer chief at Gainesboro, today. I was very pleased he reported that they've made over 45 calls within a 24-hour period. That's, you know, almost two calls per hour, which is phenomenal. The volunteers and the paid staff at that station, I think, and all the stations that did such good work and continue to do good work even into tonight, I think deserve all of our appreciation. I would also just ask that all of you who are citizens who live within, you know, reach of your neighbors, check on them. There are plenty of folks who are elderly and infirm that may not have electricity or water. Just check on them, make sure they're okay, offer, offer my helping hand. It's the least that we can do, and I think that's what really makes Frederick County great, is our sense of citizenship and community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing I'd like to bring up.
Who else?
The, there has been movement on the rezoning request on Governor Hill, and the parties have moved quicker than they, they were given 90 days to, to go back and put, sharpen their pencils, if you will, and they have moved quickly and have a, they would like to bring forward some new language and would, are requesting that they be able to reappear before this board prior to the end of the 90-day period that we had, had given them. So I would, I would like to see if the board would agree to allow this to be heard on March the 13th at our regular meeting.
Do we have any additional applications?
Any additional applications from this, this time? I do not. I will be receiving that.
Time for it to go to review agencies for comment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Doesn't sound to me like you're putting any of that time in there. I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
I understand. I understand. We can leave it at the 90-day period if that's what the board...
I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting that...
Mr. Chairman, if that's a motion, I'll second that motion to do that.
I believe that it was.
I second it.
Okay, so now we have a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm amenable to having something before that 90-day timeframe, and so if they can put together what they need to put together to come back, that's fine with me, whether it's the 13th or some other date, but I'm willing to have a shortened timeframe if all parties are amenable to that.
I had no objection either. I just want to make sure there's time for review agency comments, for it to be complete.
We agree. We agree.
And, and had, had full discussion.
And in, and in comments with one of those parties, I know that there's some discussions going on, so if that can be completed for review, then that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a concern with planning being able to return this around with, with the review and, and so forth. It would need to be prepared. Is there, I mean, even if they had it tomorrow, is that feasible?
Their meeting, their February meeting's been canceled already. By the way, it's going to Planning Commission. Unless it goes to their first meeting, you'd have to simultaneously advertise. Do you all have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's at the board level, so we would not go back to the Planning Commission necessarily, so it's at the board's discretion if you wanted to do something with that date. It would not necessarily have to go back to the Planning Commission because it's already here at the board.
Well, I, I can agree with that analysis depending on the changes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the matter was before the board, and you tabled action, so it will come back to you. What you choose to do at, at that point, you could refer it back to the Planning Commission or something like that, but it will come back to you either in 90 days or sooner if you decide to do that tonight.
Further discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Obviously, planning still will have prep time in, in making this presentation to us. If you received everything tomorrow, would, does that allow our planning staff enough time to turn it back around, even if it doesn't go to the Planning Commission? That was my question.
We would absolutely try our best to, to evaluate what was provided and make sure we got it to, to the Board of Supervisors. We would have enough time.
It doesn't go to planning.
It doesn't go to planning, but they still have to make the presentation. The preparation would still need to come from them.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. I thought this had already been through the process. There's only one item that I know of that was any kind of, I'd say, sticking point for anyone, and I, I think Mr. Wells has worked here to resolve that sticking point. And I don't know that further, I mean, planning, this is what they wanted. So Mr. Wells, I think, has come up with a solution to get them what they want, so I don't know that how much turnaround time it would take, to be honest with you, so...
I just asked the question.
Asking too. Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to bring this back before us at our March 13th meeting. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. We'll expect that back on our agenda for the March 13th meeting. Thank you for your effort. If you have a problem, please let us know ahead of time.
Good.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else? Board of Supervisors comments, anything? Vice Chairman Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. We'll stand adjourned, and we thank everyone for their time and attention.